I'd like to call tonight's Southern Planning Board meeting to order. Anna, please call the roll.
Mark Richardson.
Here.
Jason Berry.
Here.
Ken Vincent.
Here.
Ron LaHulier.
Here.
Jeremy Rhodes.
Here.
Chris Horton.
Here.
Doug Haberman.
Here.
At this time, I'd like to appoint Mr. Haberman as full voting member for the evening. First item is approval in minutes of July 17, 2024. Does anybody have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Berry, seconded by Mr. Richardson. Discussion. Mr. Richardson.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I noticed that in our discussion about the waivers at the last meeting, that three of the items that I voted no for, it said eight zero on, on for the vote, and that was item five, six, and nine. Each of those three, I voted no. There were others, but they were caught and noted on the, on the minutes, so I just want to correct those three.
So noted. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Next item is committee reports. You had the Land Use Board summary. Is there any comments on the Land Use Board summary? Moving along, City Council report. Mr. Vincent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have another report tonight.
Thank you. Next is Stratford Regional Planning Commission update. Mr. Richardson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. At our, at our meeting last Friday, the first thing we did was we approved the, the 2024 Public Participation Plan, and that's a pretty comprehensive plan about involving the public in the decision-making process through things like social media, surveys, and polls, public meetings, and the like, those kinds of things. It also lays out some goals and objectives, and it's on the SRPC website for anybody to read and review. That's it.
Thank you. Any comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. One more thing. We all, this is probably the, the one that involves us most. We did look at the, the coming up 10-year plan, and there is room for proposals for any community that wants to submit a proposal for the 10-year transportation plan. Our region has $5.8 million. There are currently five proposals that are holdovers from previous, from last year, but there's room for more to be considered. The thing we talked about is that hopefully people are submitting plans that include cost estimates and engineering studies and that kind of thing, so more than just conceptual ideas. And if, if they are conceptual ideas, then SRPC is willing to work with people to get the engineering. There's some money that they have left over from a grant for engineering and other kinds of things that go with that, so that's it.
Thank you. Eyes on 30 to 2030 Committee. Mr. Berry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right, so we actually did not have a meeting in July, so we did have our most recent meeting here on Monday, and we had a very productive meeting. First things first, we will be going over the 2010 master plan and do a quick review of the things that we may have missed. There might be some low-hanging fruit there. We also took a look at our categories, so we've decided to adjust the categories that we have. We now have eight categories that we're going to start breaking down into. I can read those off to you if you like. Right now, they are diversity and heritage, sustainability, communication, community engagement, education, revitalization, accessibility and investments, and beautification. So we're going to try and break down into those groups when we're ready. Right now, we're, we're looking at three particular things in particular. One is community mapping, so we are looking at possibly building up neighborhoods and trying to have ways of distributing information. Wayfinding, you know, as far as signage, things of that nature, pointing out where hotspots are, key restaurants, trails, things of that nature. And also beautification, you know, for example, like an adopt a spot or sponsor a tree, things like that. As far as the overall strategy, we agree that we're going to continue to work on the plan and develop it as best we can through roughly spring. At that point, we're going to bring in subject matter experts to review those plans for feasibility and risk assessment, to which then we'll bring the plan back to the board for review. All right, so that's our strategy for now. I have to report.
Thank you. Community Power Coalition, Mr. Horton.
Committee is nonmet.
Housing Committee, Mr. Horton.
No report.
All right, thank you. Next move on to item three, old business. Is there any old business before the board this evening? Director Mears.
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Next item, new business. Item A, Logic Investments LLC is seeking minor subdivision approval for one large subdivision on a property located at 378 Main Street in the Business B District, assesses map 07 Lot 08, sub number 04, 2024. Director Mears, anything to add?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You all should have received my memo. The applicant is requesting to subdivide the existing .55 acre parcel into two lots. There is an existing single-family residence within one of the lots which will remain. The lot is located in the Business District, which does not have minimum lot sizes or frontage requirements. New residential is permitted at street level in this portion of the Business District, and this, this is ready to, for review.
Application is ready. Accept the motion to, accept the application?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Before we start, I'd like to ask everybody to please turn off or mute your cellphones or other electronic devices. Also, anybody that cares to speak this evening, please come up to the podium and speak into the microphone, or if you have to stray from the podium, we do have a portable mic you can use. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. McInney to make his presentation.
Thank you very much. For the record, Kevin McInney, representing applicants who seek logic investment property at 378 Main Street. It's approximately a half-acre lot, with a single-family.
Sorry about that. Do you want me to repeat all that, or we got, we good?
Go ahead, please.
Okay. So Logic Investments owns the property at 378 Main Street. It's approximately a half-acre lot currently, with a single-family house that's under renovation. The proposal before you tonight is to split the lot basically in half. The, the new lot with the house will have 12,600 square feet, and the new vacant lot will have 11,500 square feet. It is a lot serviced by Municipal Sewer and Water. The, there are no wetlands on the property. Basically, the frontage is on Main Street, and the rear lot is about the railroad tracks. The urban compact line is in play here. It really is splits the lot in half, so the existing house and that lot will be within the urban compact, will be within the state jurisdiction, and the new lot that we're creating, the vacant lot, will be within the jurisdiction of the town for, of the city for driveway permits. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you. May have some for you. At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing for any comments from the public. If you do have any comments, please come up and state your name and your address or your affiliation. Open the public hearing. Anybody care to comment? Director Mears, is there any correspondence?
None this evening.
Seeing none, close the public hearing. Turn to questions from the board. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did notice, I drove by there and, and I looked, couple of things. The, as you're looking at it, the left-hand side of the home, is that going to comply with setbacks for the new lot? It seems like it's awfully close, and it, if I'm reading this right, it's like three feet from the new line?
It's, in this zone, there are actually no setbacks, no minimum lot size, no frontage requirement.
Okay. The, where the mailbox is, that looks like it's going to be over the line towards the, in the, in the new, in the new lot. Is that going to be moved over? Is it going to stay there?
That will be relocated.
Okay. The other thing I had is there, there is curbing that goes in front of the, the, the new lot, and if you have a, will, you need a driveway permit for making a cut there?
Yes, you will need a driveway permit for the new lot.
All right, that, that's all I had. Thank you.
Yeah, and during the driveway permit process, if we disturb into the curbing, we'll, you know, put it back to the original condition.
Yeah, I did notice that, so I just wanted to make sure that we were including the driveway. That's okay. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Mr. Berry, you all set?
Yeah.
Okay. Entertainer motion for regional impact?
Make a motion that the project does not have regional impact.
Motion made by Mr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Richardson. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Director Mears, care to review the staff recommendations?
Yes. First item is plan revisions. Per the city assessor, lots are to be known as Map 7 Lot 8 and Map 7 Lot 8-1. Lot 8 will be the lot with the existing structure. New property markers along the front property line to be set shall be granite bounds. Please show the water utilities on the plan. Conditions that must be met prior to final approval. The final plans shall bear the stamp and signature of a licensed land surveyor and should be submitted to the Department of Development Services, along with a PDF copy of the final recorded plans for tax map updates. Monumentation granite bounds shall be installed at all intersections of the lot lines and street right-ofways, as well as the property corners, which do not abut the public right-of-way. A surveyor is to submit a signed letter to the planning department stating that the new lot corner monuments have been set prior to the recording of the subdivision. Conditions to be completed prior to the start of site work. All new service connections from the utility overhead line shall be installed underground. The applicant shall apply for a new water and sewer connection permit. The applicant will be required to pay standard water and sewer connection fees assessed on the new properties connecting to the water and sewer system. The development will require a new address. Please submit a request for a new address to the city engineer. If a hearing before the E-911 committee is required, this hearing must occur prior to the issuance of building permits. Per Section C, per Section 1923E1, the building shall display the designated address number in such a manner as to be plainly invisible from the street, which abuts the main entrance to the property. Such number shall be a minimum of 3.5 inches in height and must be reflective. The applicant shall obtain all applicable permits through the Department of Public Works or New Hampshire DOT, as applicable where the property is located in close proximity to the transition between the state of New Hampshire and locally owned Main Street. This shall include, but not limited to, driveway permits and trench permits. Erosion controls are required to be installed prior to the start of site work. Conditions applicable during and after construction, all new subdivision lots shall be required to have a foundation survey submitted prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy. If during construction, the existing curbing or roadways are damaged, the lot owner will be required to repair and replace in kind to the satisfaction of the Director of Public Works and Utilities. The new proposed lot, once developed, shall have a minimum of two trees, not less than two inches in caliber, in the front yard, and these trees may be retained from the existing onsite trees or new plantings prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy.
Thank you. Entertainer subdivision motion, Mr. Horton.
Move that the request of Logic Investments LLC for a minor subdivision approval to create one new lot at property located at 378 Main Street be approved with the conditions outlined in the director's memo.
Motion made by Mr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Motion passes. Application's approved. Item B, Matt Lawton is seeking a waiver from Section 12.7.8 of the Site Plan Review Regulations requirement for the screening of rooftop mechanical equipment on a property located at 192 Route 108 in the Commercial Industrial CI District, assesses map 62, Lot 05, Site Number 112022. Director Mears, anything to add?
Yes, so this was approved by the planning board back in October 2022. The request for site plan approval and conditional use permit for automobile sales and infrastructure. The applicant began construction of the project in April 2023. It was brought to our attention that one of the units from the southbound lane of Route 108 is visible from the street and does not meet the site plan regulations for screening of rooftop mechanical. The construction company was faced with supply chain availability issues of the rooftop mechanical equipment and needed to make changes of the manufacturer. These units are slightly larger and taller than the original ones proposed, so that's why they are coming back before the planning board to seek a waiver from rooftop mechanical being visible from the street. We did provide some photos from Route 108, looking northbound at the, at the site. And that's it.
Thank you. Is the application ready for acceptance?
Yes, the application is ready for acceptance.
Entertainer motion for the application acceptance, Mr. Horton.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Berry. Discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Application is accepted. At this time, I'd like to invite Matt Lawton, the representative, to make the presentation.
Good evening. Good evening, Matt Lawton with Connolly Brothers. We were the architect and construction manager for the project, representing DSR Motor Group and Tri-City, Chrysler Dodge Jeep and Ram, as well as their project manager for the project. As Michelle mentioned, we were notified very late in the process, unfortunately, that the unit in question was more visible. As I've mentioned and as was outlined, we did have a supply chain issue that required us to look at alternate units. We checked them for general size as far as plan and location and capacities in our typical reviews, but we typically don't pay quite as much attention to the height because it's typically not as much of an issue. But in this case, it appears that it is an issue. So we are unfortunately held up. We're currently operating under a temporary certificate of occupancy. We've satisfied, I believe, every other requirement throughout the process that was laid out in the conditions for approvals, and I believe our temporary CFO actually may be coming up for the deadline as of beginning the next week, I believe. So if a recommendation is made for some work, we would need an extension on that certificate of occupancy as well. At this point in time, it would be very difficult to provide a physical screen. If you do provide screening on a rooftop, and in particular, something that close to the edge of the building, you're going to be imparting additional snow loads onto the roof, as well as the roof below because of the high-low conditions in this case. That would require some significant structural modifications to the roof joists in occupied space at this time, so it would be very difficult to accomplish from that sort of standpoint. Alternatively, and I believe I heard, represent, or member Jason briefly talking with a member Richardson about perhaps an option of to paint the units that are, in particular, the one that is viewed most from the south side. We'd look to probably either do something either black to match the building, which you would kind of see blending into the rest of the building itself, or perhaps a dark green to match the trees to the back of the site. This paint would be matte in finish. It would not be glossed, so that it would sort of try to blend into the surroundings at that point. Our recommendation would be for the one unit that's in particular of appearance, I guess is the way that I would say it. So I leave it up to, I, I hold my hat, hat in my hand, it's, you know, unfortunately, we're way down in the process, and, and we wish that we had perhaps caught this earlier. You know, we, these units did go up in December of 2023. We had plenty of time to perhaps at that point reevaluate our situation, and unfortunately, we didn't stand out in the street, I guess, enough, looking from that side. If you stand at the sign, sort of right at the entrance to the property, you don't see the unit, surprisingly. We looked at, we kept looking at pictures for months beyond it, and we couldn't see the unit until we drove down the street after it was brought to our attention, and we said, oh, those couple of trees that we were asked to remove in the electrical easement and to increase visibility for the sign, now may that unit pop, pop out, so.
Increased visibility?
Yes. Increased not only the building's visibility, but that unit's location was previously perhaps screened by trees as you were driving up. So I leave it to the board for, hopefully, your recommendation, either to accept our request for waiver, or perhaps to apply a simple condition to paint the unit.
Okay. Open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience care to comment on the application? Any correspondence?
None this evening.
Concerning this application? None. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Questions from the board? Mr. Vincent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, you know, I'm an alternate here, and I come once every or twice a year here. I'm really going to sit back and follow the boards that you, the board members here because they really are here every single month. I'm going to follow your lead, but there's one thing that comes up to mind is this is a, if we, if, if the board grants this, does this open up a box for everybody that doesn't comply? Do they come out and do they now get a waiver too because somebody else got a waiver? That always, that always comes to my mind. Another thing is we a question for the, the applicant or the builder or the architect. Thank you for taking my question, but if this doesn't get granted, which, what do you do with this?
If I may speak to the first part of your question, there is, or to the first part of your statement, there are a multiple, multitude of projects going up and down that route stretch, all the way from the city line to, all the way up to the Hilltop Chevrolet site. I did a quick survey, and every building that has a flat roof has rooftops that are visible. We did bring that to the attention of the planning department, and they mentioned to us that a lot of those projects have been grandfathered in, or that they have received waivers in, previously in the past as well. As far as if we don't get a waiver or a, a additional condition to paint the units, that, I don't really, there's, there's not really much we can do. That unit is feeding the service drive-through, which has a mechanical requirement for ventilation and for, for tempering, as there are service riders within the service drive. And we tried to locate that roof, or that unit on the upper roof and away from the edge that it wouldn't be visible. If we put it on the lower roof, it would be even more visible. So there's not really a method to relocate that unit and provide additional duct work to, to get it to work from, from that location, without additional structural modifications as well, because that rooftop would require addition, requires a mechanical curb, structural steel, the joists to support the roof. The roof was designed for that unit in that location, so it would be, become quite the process. It could be done. It would be very, very difficult, very time-consuming to, to complete.
Thank you. Okay, I guess my question is, the reason is because of the different design from the original intent of what you were going to buy?
That's correct. We, I mean, we did, at the time, I did bring the original renderings and, and views that we had done, which again, I think we took, had the view taken basically right at the curb, not perhaps far enough into the road, that did show that the, the unit had been concealed in the past. I can bring those up if, if you would like to see them, but the majority of the units, if, on the building themselves, they grew in height as a result, and because of the material change.
Okay, so you can get the same type of?
No, they, it was not, it was going to be two years before we could get the unit from the original manufacturer. We had to substitute manufacturers.
And there's no way you can extend the wall up?
So if we did extend the roof, as I said, you're now creating a shelf for snow to drift up against, which would require additional structural modifications for it. In order to conceal that unit, you'd probably have to raise the roof, probably in the range of five feet, which would be considerable, and impart an additional snow load on the upper roof, where it's going to drift up against that, as well as the lower roof below.
Other questions from the board? Mr. Rhodes? Mr. Richardson?
Thank you. I've driven by there several times since you opened, never noticed it. We were going to pick up my wife's car today, and all of a sudden, just about where this, just about where this photograph was taken, there was. And, and you know, she was driving my car, and I'm just sitting there, and all of a sudden, I went, wow.
And then two seconds later, you don't see it.
And you get 50 feet more, and you don't see it at all. When you, like you said, when you come turning in, it's gone. You don't see it. And it, and it's almost a shame that there aren't a couple of more of these trees that just come down a little bit further, because you wouldn't notice it either. But it was, when I noticed it, it was just very bright, and maybe it's because the sun finally came out, or something like that, I'm not sure, but all of a sudden, it was very, very noticeable. I think, as Mr. Berry was talking about, maybe there are those trees behind there, and maybe, you know, a green similar paint or something like that might just do the job and hide it pretty well, but it was a surprise to me, because I've driven by there on my own several times and not even noticed it until today.
I will say, probably most people, again, they're doing, I, I don't want to say what the posted speed limit is on there, I forget if it's 30 or 35. Most people are probably doing in excess of that, and if you're not really looking for, if you're not looking for this situation, you're not going to see it, because it's within a blink of an eye, basically, and like you said, within 25, 50 feet, you don't see it any longer.
Mr. Rhodes and Mr. Horton.
So you're caught in between kind of a rock and a hard place here. If you have to ascend that wall, you're doing significant reengineering to the building. At the same time, what I don't want the board to get into a practice of is just freely granting after-the-fact waivers, which puts us in an interesting position. To kind of piggyback off of an item that Mr. Vincent raised, there is a concern about opening that box up. However, we do have an extenuating circumstance in here. You were trying to build this in an era with unprecedented supply chain disruptions that caused you to have to modify plans. So I like the idea that Mr. Berry and Mr. Richardson have discussed around painting the unit, particularly with the trees behind it. Green makes sense, and there's actually a specific shade, which, I'm not kidding, is called go-away green. Sounds like you know it. Disney developed it for construction walls, because it specifically blends into backgrounds and makes things less noticeable. It's a matte green that really does work. So it is an eyesore. I think painting it makes it a lot less of an eyesore. I'd be in favor of going that route.
I appreciate that. Thank you, and we would make sure that we source the proper green for it. We're certainly not going to go lime green or some, some green that would stick out. Thank you.
Mr. Horton?
I'll just piggyback on all good comments made here tonight. I would agree, I have not noticed it. I've driven by several times and not noticed the rooftop structures, so it was only when it was pointed out that I, that I did notice it. So I would be in favor of a non-invasive type approach here. You know, if painting is the solution, I'd be okay with that. Other than that, I would be okay with leaving it as is as well, so I'm at, I'm at the discretion of the board here, so.
Mr. Berry?
Yeah, everyone knows how I feel. I know, it's like the writing was on the wall.
I, you know, I, we had talked about it, and I overheard, so.
Yeah, well, you know, the reality is that, you know, you guys got stuck in a bad situation, right? I mean, we did it right, guys. I mean, we, we looked at the plans, we, we went based on, on what you guys were going to do, and you can't predict the market. You don't know what's going to happen, right? It's an inconvenience, yes. I, I agree with you that the engineering would be astronomical to do that. Those units are very, very heavy, and not to mention all of the piping and routings and ducting, all of it. So, yeah, I don't know what the exact color is. I say, you know, find out what's going on directly behind it and try and mimic it. Look from the south, look from the north, find the happy medium. Maybe it is go-away green, whatever that color green. I know the color green you're talking about. Might, might be, might be a little light for this application, but I like where you're going. So I would say go for it. I'll definitely vote for the paint. Thank you.
Any comments from the board? Mr. Haberman?
Yeah, I agree with the rest of the board on.
Yeah, I agree with the rest of the board on a situation like that you have. And agree with Mr., the rest of the board when I've driven by there, I've never seen it either. I agree with the board.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. This does not require a regional impact?
No.
Okay, looking for a motion for the waiver request. Mr. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the site plan waiver application of Matthew Lawton be accepted with the requirement of painting the utility an appropriate color. Hopefully it'll go away.
Motion made by Mr. Richardson. Seconded by Mr. Haberman. Any discussion? Those favor is your right hand. Close. Motion passes. Waiver is granted.
Thank you, we greatly appreciate it. We'll make sure that we get on that right away. As far as extending the temporary certificate of occupancy, how should we have our office continue to work with you on that?
We'll work on emailing back and forth on, on a date that you think you can get it painted by.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And may I just add from, from a board perspective, thank you for your expediency in meeting with us on this. We very quickly responded to the, the concern from your board and had very limited time to respond. But I do greatly appreciate your willingness to listen to us and to put on us on a very early agenda. We've been doing a lot of work with other locations in the area recently and the process has been excruciating. So Summersworth has been very good to be working with. I know we had some challenges early on back in 2022 when we were dealing with the original design and some compromises from the corporate standard that we needed to make that we feel still makes for a beautiful building. But it was very good to be working with this board and we look forward to working with you guys in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C, land use and natural resources master plan chapter workshop with Strafford Regional Planning Commission. Director Mears?
Yes, thank you. We have Strafford Regional Planning Commission, we have Jackson Rand here and Lisa Murphy. They have been helping us with the land use and natural resources master plan chapter and we're gonna do a few exercises that they've listed out, so I'm gonna let them take it over.
Thank you. So the green light's on, can you hear me? Okay. So Jackson is passing, passing out some
Thank you.
Sticky, sticky notes. And what we're gonna do is, I know you've all received a copy of the, the goals and the themes for both the natural resource and the land use chapters. I think to save time, because we've got an hour here and not several hours, we're not gonna go over each one of them, but instead I'll mention the themes and, and the goals. And if you have some, some changes that you think we should have, go ahead and write them on your sticky notes and please say whether it's for goal number one, two, or three. And then what we'll do is we'll compile that and, and put it into the draft. I think that's the most efficient way we can do this. So the themes and, so the goals actually have been taken from different workshops we've done and we've come up with four, for the land use, we've come up with four themes. The intent is to keep this similar to the housing chapter. It will have the same look. So the first theme for land use is sustainable and smart growth. Second, second theme is equitable and inclusive development. Third theme is access and connectivity. And the fourth theme is infrastructure resilience. So one of the things with the, we've got three goals under theme one. Some of these goals may end up being actions rather than goals. In looking at these, you know, I feel like some of them are really actions. So it might not come out as, as it is on this paper, but this is a very good start for us. So goal number one is balanced, sustainable development and smart growth that highlights and preserves history while accommodating future population, economic and climate changes. Number two is promote green infrastructure and sustainable development practices in new construction and redevelopment. And goal number three is encourage the redevelopment of underutilized properties, parcels, and encourage infill in areas already developed. So if you have any suggested changes on any of those, you know, please take some time and write, write them down. If you have additional goals, you know, we'll take that too. If you think it might be a good strategy, a good action, you know, write that down as well. But I would appreciate if you put what, what number is associated with, so we don't have to guess. Yes.
Yeah, just like Lisa said, if you can write number one, number two, or number three on the post-it note and if you have a post-it note filled out, just raise your hand, I'll come around and grab it and stick them up on the poster board for you.
He's my lovely Vanna White.
I'll take it.
All right.
Strafford Regional Planning Commission did print out some additional material. It's Summersworth Master Plan Update Land Use and Natural Resources Draft Themes and Goals. To refer back to.
Is, does everybody have a copy of that? You passed it all out, okay. All right, theme number two, equitable and inclusive development. Goal number one is equitable and inclusive development that engages residents and ensures that projects meet community needs and reflect local values. Goal number two is expand upon public engagement processes and practices, foster community leadership. And goal number three is strengthen partnerships for development with businesses, nonprofits, and community groups and developers. And if you have any questions, if there's something you, you know, aren't quite understanding, feel free to let us know. Theme number three, access and connectivity. Goal number one, improving access to amenities and connectivity throughout the community. Goal number two is enhance connectivity through maintaining existing and expanding pedestrian and biking infrastructure along key corridors and throughout neighborhoods in the community, existing open space and recreational sites. Well, that's a long one for a goal. Goals are usually a little bit shorter. That might be more, like I mentioned, that might be more of a, of an action, but we can work with it. Goal number three, implement the principles of complete streets for future and existing developments. Any questions on any of those? Yes.
Going back to theme number one, goal two. My question is for the, is the board able to influence contractors to move towards a green, sustainable building practice? Is that within our purview? Or influence?
Good question. Michelle, do you have any response to that?
So we could do it in our site plan regulations. For example, if we were in an aquifer protection zone, we could ask that the people plowing the parcel could be green pro certified so they're not adding additional salt to that area. So I think there is ways that we can do it per the regulations.
And if you have suggested changes to that one, you know, write them down. Any other questions? Okay. Theme number four, infrastructure resilience. Goal number one, foster the need for resilient infrastructure through incentives and regulation. And goal number two, promote and expand mixed-use development and zoning to support economically and social, socially diverse areas, more resilient to economic shocks or other challenges.
You have a question?
Yes.
Infrastructure resilience, is that to stop building things or like if you're in a hurricane zone, you would try to encourage people to build their houses more per standards? Or like, you know, we've had in the last probably 10, 20 years, a lot of supposedly 100-year floods. Same thing where they build their houses and how they build them? Is that what this is getting at?
That could be, I, you know, what, what comes to mind for me is infrastructures such as culverts and things make them more resilient to heavy storm events. You know, roads, the road infrastructure, things like that.
So it's not just homes, it's the whole?
Right.
Whole deal. Okay. Thanks.
All right. Any changes? We're doing really good. Well, these were carefully put together between city staff and, and our staff. Like I said, it's things that we've accumulated from surveys and, and workshops. So natural resources, theme number one, green spaces, natural amenities, and sustainable development. Goal number one, conserve and expand spaces and natural amenities throughout the community to improve access to recreation and activities while emphasizing environmental stewardship and conservation. It's a long one. Goal number two, urban green space development through the creation of pocket parks and the planting of more urban trees. Goal number three, improve natural assets in the urbanized areas of the community and ensure that new development emphasizes sustainable practices. Goal number four, encourage alternatives to conventional subdivisions by using innovative land use methods. Goal number five, review the existing ordinances surrounding conservation subdivisions. Out of curiosity, how, how are the conservation subdivisions, have you had, has that been one that's been used again and again?
Yes, it's required to have a conservation. And if you're not gonna, if you're gonna do a traditional subdivision, you have to submit a special use permit. I think it's over five lots.
And did you previously have cluster subdivisions in here and changed it to conservation? Or was this just something thought of?
I think it's both.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know conservation subdivisions, you're supposed to do the conservation land first and then the lots around it. So you don't end up with the garbage.
At one time, we had clubs, cluster subdivision, but we had to pull it back because people were using, they weren't using uplands as a conservation.
In the calculation?
Part, so it was pulled back and then it was reissued with those changes.
Yeah, I was just curious because I have one, one town I'm working with is gung ho on cluster subdivisions and it's like, no, conservation subdivisions are a little bit better way to go, so just curious, thanks.
Yeah, plus I think the terminology was kinda fine tuned to reflect that.
Good, glad to see it. All right, the next one is land conservation trails and connectivity. Goal number one, improve community connectivity through the creation of a network of trails and natural areas. Goal number two is develop criteria to assist in decisions for acquisition of land for conservation. Any questions on those? Okay.
I guess one question. In one case, we're, we're trying to conserve land, but also people are saying we gotta build more houses to, to, or build more residences for, you know, to make housing affordable for people. So it's kinda, how's that balanced?
Well.
Because you need the land to build.
Right, you know, and, and infill development is one way, you know, lot sizes with the conservation subdivision is another way. But yeah, it is always a, you know, a lot of times when we're working in the planning field, there's conflicting interests and you do your best to work with them.
It's kinda built up instead of out?
Yeah, that's another way, yep. Multi-units are another way. Yeah, there, you know, we thought we were smart years ago by requiring, you know, bigger lot sizes and, you know, then, then that ended up biting us and creating sprawl and now we're like, oh boy, now what do we do? So I think we're getting smarter. Okay. Theme number three, environmental stewardship and protection. Goal number one, seek best management practices for reducing invasive species and develop resources for property owners. Goal number two, develop strategies to protect air quality. Goal number three, protect the, the quality and quantity of water resources. Goal number four is consider ways for biodiversity and habitat protection. Goal number five, create awareness of the impact of climate change and weather impact on the natural environment. Goal number six, seek to conserve lands that will create unfragmented parcels in wildlife corridors. Any questions on those? All right, theme number four, education outreach and leadership development. Goal number one, increase awareness of the city's natural resources through outreach and education. And goal number two, cultivate leadership for the future to support environmental stewardship and conservation efforts. Any questions on those? I think these were all really worked well, worked through and it's, it's a good, it's a good set of goals.
Mr. Vincent?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I can just comment, you know, you can see, this goes back along the lines of lot size. You can see that the city of Dover, and I know we're not Dover, we're never gonna be Dover, but cities that are close to each other sometimes feed off each other and it works well. You can see along the Route 108 corridor in the Willam Pond area, it's almost like they've reduced their lot size to a quarter acre to accommodate some really, really close housing in there. And I guess, I mean, I guess that's their solution right now to a never-ending growth of population to accommodate housing. Boy, really tight, it's really tight. And it really changes the whole dynamics of what a neighborhood looks like. It's, it's just so tight, that's just a comment.
You know, and one of the things is by providing housing options, you know, some people might like that. That might be more affordable. Others might want, you know, a larger parcel and not be bothered by their neighbors. You know, I, I personally agree with you, I don't want neighbors that close to me. But, you know, there's, there's a lot of people that don't mind it, so it's all about housing options.
Thank you.
Mr. Barry and Mr. Richardson? Check this side.
Couple of, a couple of random comments. And actually, I'm gonna piggyback that statement. You know, it's, it's all about what do you wanna be when you grow up? Right? You know, I live, I live on the Rawlinsford side of the Nego Hill and for me, I have a half acre lot, I love it. I don't want people right 20 feet away from me, you know, it's way too close. So I'm okay with development, I'm okay with packing it in tight, but we have to be very smart about where we do it and how we do it, right? I'm, I'm even coming around to the ADU conversation. I was, I was anti-ADU right from the, from the get-go, so. Anyway, back to this. So, so I'm on the Eyes for 2030 Committee, I guess you're aware. So a lot of these, these things that you're looking at are actually in alignment with the things that we're talking about. One of those things is wayfinding, right? So we wanna try and pick out places in the city, put up signs to help guide folks towards things. So I love this idea of, you know, having your connectivity of, of network trails and natural areas. I think that's wonderful. You know, certainly we'd like to participate and try and help you link those together, the more the merrier, right? We're also a big fan, and, and we spent quite a bit of time yesterday talking about regrowth, right? Allowing certain areas of the town to naturally reclaim themselves. You know, things like adopt a spot, spots are a tree. Literally on my notes, it says allow areas to naturally reclaim. You know, and I'm thinking like, you know, the, the golf course, that's not a conservation area. Well, imagine if we didn't touch, if we, we took a part of the pines, for example. We say, you know what, this 200-foot by 200-foot area, we don't touch it. What's, what's it gonna look like in five years? You're probably gonna have trees growing there. Let's give it. Let's give it back, right? So I like a lot of the things that you have going on here. Personally, I don't wanna change anything. I think you guys have done a phenomenal job, and I look forward to seeing this when it comes out formally.
Good. It's, it's been worked and worked and worked, so.
I can tell. Great job, guys. Thank you.
Mr. Richardson, you're next.
Yeah, whenever I see invasive species, I spent 18 years trying to eradicate fragmites and knotweed at the transfer station in Hampton near the marsh. An impossible task. They just grow right back.
Exactly where you're talking about.
I know up at the pines, we used the goats to get rid of the, the poison ivy was the primary thing, but there were other species up there that the goats gobbled down. Within two years, everything's right back again.
Right.
I, I see an emphasis on some invasive species as an ongoing money-wasting project. I honestly do, because, I mean, they're, 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 they're so invasive, they be, I mean, you know, you're in conservation and you probably, you might have other opinions here, but it's a lot of money that is literally spent just to do it all over again. And I don't, I don't understand that. I mean, they're, they're invasive for a reason. They've come and they've taken over.
I, I understand what you're saying, you know. I have conflicting reasons of, of similar to that, you know, yes, it's a lot of money. When I, when I go and see a highway that all these trees are dying, like, all right, we've got climate change happening, we've got, you know, drier weather and hotter weather, you know, are, is this the new way to go? You know, is this the new evolution? But I don't think so. You know, there's, there's, but I agree, it, it is quite costly, and it's, it seems like a never-ending battle, to be honest with you. But I, I think it, it's a tough one. I read an article where, you know, a new species of bird was found in this invasive species, and, you know, it's like, well, should we be taking that out? Whether that was true or not, I don't know, but.
And I, and I have one, I wanna let other people speak first before you answer this. As I was reading this and following along with you, I, I have to admit, I lost track what we're supposed to do with these, so after everybody else gets a chance to speak, then if you could just go over that quickly again?
So what those were for is if you had some changes to any of these, or some suggestions on how to improve them, or an additional goal, then that's what we'd be looking for. But it sounds like everybody's pretty, pretty set with what we've got.
Okay.
Mr. Horton, and then Mr. Rhodes.
Yeah, that was just gonna be my comment as well. I think you guys have done a fantastic job coming up with the goals and themes, and I wouldn't add or subtract or anything at this time, so thank you.
Like I said, we can't take all the credit. City staff did a great job in reviewing them too, so.
Mr. Rhodes and Mr. Haberman.
So I'd echo comments about the quality of these. I think they're extremely high. Everybody involved has done a great job with them. The only thing that I'd suggest as a potential change is define some terms at the front for folks who might not be as familiar. I'd like to see this become a citizen resource as well, to try to get people more involved, and they may not be as familiar with a lot of the planning terms that we run into.
You lose sight of that sometimes.
Yeah. It's easy, too. I work in technology, I understand. We're, we're some of the worst offenders. To kinda comment on what Mr. Richardson raised with invasives, yeah, it can feel like a losing battle sometime, sometimes, particularly if you're dealing with knotweed. That stuff, I, I don't think you're killing it without a backhoe and some persistence. But even getting away from the, the tree hugging aspects of that concern is the amount of damage that these things cause. Bittersweet kills forests. Knotweed destroys riverbanks. Multiflora rose chokes out understories. Buckthorn comes in and takes over native forests, and the issue that we have here is, in the absence of a native predator for these plants, there isn't control without the humans who put them here in the first place getting involved. And that's what creates the problem. If we don't keep these things pushed back, our ecosystem as it exists, as it exists today, ceases to be. And it's a problem that humans made. Humans have to keep fighting back against it.
And many of the times has been, we've brought the invasive in.
In the vast majority of cases, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, knotweed and kudzu are probably the most egregious examples of that. These things were encouraged plantings for a long time, until suddenly we found out that, oops, unintended consequences happened with these things. Commenting on a piece that Mr. Berry raised, yeah, people do have different interests in how compact they want their living situations to be. I own a house in the downtown core, my bulkhead literally opens up onto my neighbor's land, and we're happy with it. The idea here, I think, is to give people choices of what they want and not have cookie-cutter, half-acre, acre developments. People, some people want that. I'd go crazy maintaining that much land. So smart zoning allows you to create a city where people have different options of what they, of how they choose to live and the circumstances they, they want to experience in there, and I think we've got a great opportunity to do that. Also, on the topic of conservation subdivisions and what those can turn into, I just did an easement monitoring exercise with another member of the Conservation Commission on Saturday, looking at a small plot of land that was put into conservation, sandwiched between two very typical suburban cul-de-sac subdivisions. You get 20 feet into the trees and it feels like primeval forest. Land does reclaim, and we have this beautiful little sequestered ecosystem with evidence of fox and deer streams that are incredibly heavily populated with amphibians. It creates corridors for wildlife and pockets of green space, and conservation subdivisions create that, and balance the need of increased housing against maintaining something of the natural world that we're bulldozing under to create that housing. I would not wanna lose sight of that. I wouldn't wanna go to a constant flow of tiny little lots of multifamily, but we can encourage large multifamily developments that get housing units into an area that desperately needs them. We have an opportunity to do something pretty important here with smart zoning to correct some of the tangle of zones that we have in this city, and I'm grateful for the work that you and the city staff have done to try to look at this and get us someplace better.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Haberman?
Well, I don't think I could top any of that, but what I can say, I, I remember quite a few months ago, we, we did this in help you develop all these sustainable items and the themes and the goals, and that was kinda interesting, too, but, yeah, based on what everybody said here, it's, it's kinda hard, but like you said, and what the board says, to reach somebody's personal use of how they wanna live is, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions to the board? Director Mears? Take it away.
I think we gotta put our sticky notes up, right? The next?
Do, do you have some that?
There's a couple.
Okay.
I see Jeremy has a couple.
One of mine already got answered.
Okay.
And my main was around define some terms, so if that's something you can do.
If you do have any, just raise your hand, I'll come around and grab them. If not, on the backside of that page, there's also contact information, so if you end up reviewing this later, feel free to email us any additional information you have. But if you have any Post-its, raise your hand, I'll come grab them.
And then we're gonna break into two groups.
Yeah, so for the next exercise, we're gonna need you to get up and break into two groups. We've got a map. Oh, okay. Hold the horses. We've got a mapping exercise, and Jackson is our GIS mapping expert.
Yeah, hi, everyone. Only three of you here, I know, so I'll introduce myself real quickly. My name is Jackson Rand, I am the Senior GIS Planner at SRPC. So if you've reviewed any of the maps and any of the recent projects we've done for Summersworth, I'm the one that made those maps. And real quick, shameless plug, if you have any map needs in the city, feel free to reach out to me or reach out to Michelle, and she can forward those along. But if you could all grab this map that's in your packet for me? We did a workshop quite a while ago where we had four tables around a large room, and we had a big poster-sized map of the city of Summersworth on each table. And we said, we gave everyone a bunch of sticky notes, markers, pencils, pens, highlighters, all of that, and we said, mark up this map in a way that you want Summersworth to look like in the future. We took all four of those maps and combined them into a single map, which is what you're looking at right here. So if you could just take a minute or two to look at that, we're gonna pull these tables together, and we have really big table-sized maps, and we're gonna gather around the tables, and we just wanna hear your input on whether or not you ultimately agree with what is on this final map, or if you wanna see any changes. We have markers, pens, highlighters, sticky notes, so we can mark up these maps if you wish. But we'll move the tables, just take a minute or two and take a look at that map, and then we'll pull the big ones out for you guys to look at.
So while the Planning Board works with Stratford Regional Planning Commission, we're gonna take a break on Channel 22, and Lisa and Jackson are gonna report out from each group.
Back in session. Now it is. How do I turn this on? Because I'm gonna have to walk around. Just switch it.
Underneath.
Is that working? It's red underneath. Is that working? Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Hello? There we go. All right. There were a couple things that we differed on between the two groups, so I put the maps up in front of all of you. I'm going to talk about some of the things that you all came to a similar consensus on, and then I'm gonna point out the differences, and we can have a discussion on what we think this should look like, or if we can't come to an answer tonight, possibly homework assignment for you guys. So I will point out that there is a conservation area that we had mapped right here on the map, and both groups noted that the area nearby should also be conserved. So it seems like there was general consensus there between all Planning Board members. Both groups talked about this trail and how wonderful this trail would be, but also discussed the logistics of that and how difficult it would be. Both groups seemed fine with all of the purple mixed-use areas, and I didn't hear any suggestions for removing or expanding those districts. The biggest changes that we saw between the two groups is if you look at the yellow, kinda lime-green area down at the bottom, it's the mid-to-high-density zone. One group suggested pulling that zone down to Commercial Drive. The other group suggested pulling that zone up to Blackwater Road. So that's one discrepancy between the two that we're gonna have to try to find a solution to. I'll stop there and see if anyone has any thoughts before I go on to the next one. That's absolutely an option as well.
I just talked to kinda what our group was discussing on the mid-density, is I think we thought a lot of the structures in that area, a lot of the buildings and structures in that area were already kinda consistent with medium-density, so I think that was kinda the rationale behind it.
And I, I will point out that this was, you know, it was a very high-level activity that we did, and when we asked people to draw on the map and label, what do you want that to be? People labeled it as mid-to-high-density housing, but didn't tell us what their definition of that means. And so I do agree, I heard from a bunch of people, that having definitions for what these zones are on the map would be very beneficial. Does anyone have any comments on that yellow lime-green zone about reducing, expanding, keeping it the same? Do you wanna think about it?
I think the point that I'd add on there is that there's already a trend in that towards tighter-density housing. We have a development which looks to be more like compact townhome-type structures going in off of High Street in that space, I believe it's up there, not, not that one, the, the yellow section. Yeah, I think it's down and to the left from our view, yeah, in there. That's going in up there. I can't, I don't remember the address off the top of my head, but it's a, a left after the 1886 barber shop, is oriented towards downtown, that's developing in there, so it seems like that space is kind of gravitating towards a higher-density housing naturally. Jumping off of, of that section a little bit, too, we did have that section of the downtown that abuts the Salmon Falls River, that's turning into more urban core than mixed-use with the two apartment buildings. One already approved, another proposed in there, too. Yeah, up there.
But the other group said mixed.
I'm speaking to the mic.
But the other group said mixed-use development is good in that you could still accomplish, you know, the higher-density with the mixed-use, so if somebody wants to comment from this side?
Yeah, one thing, with the lime-green, yellow area down there, lemon yellow, I guess.
Lemon is good. That's a good lemon.
Yeah, with, with that, one thing I don't know, in, in looking at it, I don't know what's on the other side of the border there and that neighbors that area. It doesn't look like there's much there, and I don't know if that is, I mean, not, we can do whatever we want on our side of the, the city line, but if that is a natural corridor for wildlife, if that is, you know, I don't know what's there, and I'm trying to remember in my head and it's not coming to me, so it's hard to say, you know, if there is, how much does development there encroach upon wildlife and other things like that? I can't say that just by looking at this without knowing what's next door.
Yep.
Mr. Berry?
So, so I was one of the guys that spoke to the pulling back of the lemon section, and I think, I think at our core, I think we have a misalignment on what medium-density is, right? So for me, I consider single-family housing low-density. I don't know if you guys agree. When I think of medium-density, I think of, say, mixed-use, you know, like, let's say, a business downstairs, residential upstairs, and, you know, that could be a two-story, three-story, four-story. High-density, to me, would be a large residential apartment building. You know, our Terra Meadows, for example, would be considered high-density. To me, in that, that High Street corridor, at least up to roughly, I'd say, maybe around Walmart, I would say is probably low-density, at least that's my definition. So I agree with where the purple sections are, at least on Main Street, I think that's, that's perfectly tailored for that area, but we may have to debate what, what we wanna be when we grow up. That, that whole lemon section, do, do you guys want Terra Meadows back there? Do you want a whole street of Terra Meadows? Maybe you do, maybe you don't, I don't know.
I'd also like to echo that comment. I think it would be helpful to have a quick discussion on what these definitions might be, because I do think different people have different ideas in their heads of what these definitions are, and that could have led to some of the confusion of what's going on the map.
And, and, okay, okay, that's, that is Terra Meadows. So the other side is Rollinsford, which has resisted every project that has been developed or had been proposed in that area by this, by the same folks that developed that, and that is a high-traffic area for wildlife and that kind of thing, so, you know, there was a proposal there that would be on the other side of the, of the property, but we'd get all the, all the traffic, we'd get all the, the police calls, and we'd get all that other kinda stuff over there, so I, I don't, I'm not sure that I would wanna expand that area a whole lot anymore for, for, for housing, but the, the other... But the other, on the idea of density, what Kenny was describing at the, up on Willand Pond, where they really are cramming in those housing, it's not high-density, but it's certainly, the land is disappearing. The, you know, green space is disappearing. They're packing them in so much that I would at least call it, I would call it at least mid-density kind of a situation.
Almost like, it's almost like it's a micro-pocket, right? It's like a high-density micro-pocket surrounded by low-density, which is exactly what it is, by the way, right? There aren't any apartment buildings or condos immediately around that vicinity. Well, okay, across the street, quarter-mile down, yeah, okay.
I think, for me, it's kind of an odd way to define it, but I define medium versus high versus low-density. Low-density, you need one key to get into your house, and you don't share a wall with anybody. Medium-density, you need one key to get into your house, and you do share a wall with somebody. High-density, you need at least two keys to get into your home. So when we're talking about mid-density, I'm thinking of things like townhouses, triple-deckers, things along those lines. And if we're looking at that section of High Street, I wouldn't have a problem with more of that kind of development going in there. It's a street that, as busy as it is, does accommodate high-traffic, got some developable land or redevelopable land in there. I wouldn't necessarily want another Terra Meadows getting dropped in there, because that's a lot that I would rather see in a more dense-core sort of situation. But if you look at it that way, I think that's entirely appropriate for mid.
I guess one thing to add to that, too, is I think about infill as well in the discussion about mid-densitys. You know, it could still be a townhouse, but also infill the current layout there as well.
Yeah, so I think, I guess we're, now we understand each other. So as long as we have a good understanding of what the definitions are that we're playing with, it's all subjective, right? And we're all going to have a different answer, but until we understand what lemon is, what lemon is lemon, is purple is purple, is whatever that orange color is, whatever that is. Because I want to understand, when I see high-density, I'm thinking Sky Rises. I'm thinking high-density, multiple units. I'm thinking Elm Street. That's literally what I see, and I say, I could see 10 Elm Streets going into that section.
So what if we updated this map based on the comments we heard tonight? Proposed definitions for these various areas. Send it back to you guys and get another round of comments.
Love it.
Love it.
Yeah. One more question really quick I just want to bring up. In both groups, nothing really happened in this side of town. Are we really happy with this side of town, or did we not have enough time to get there in this exercise?
We were starting to sniff in that direction. You see, we have a conservation area. I mean, it's all undeveloped. It's wide open out there. I guess the question is, what do you want to be when you grow up? For me, I love green space. I love trees. I think that's what makes us special, opposed to Dover and Porches. Porches doesn't have any green space anymore, not much. So if we can still hit that 750 units by 2040 and still keep what makes us us, let's preserve it.
Yeah. I think we're pretty much bound to hit that 740 units by 2040 if we're covering a third of that in two projects downtown.
And the other thing with that is that it just went. It came and it went. Sorry about that. Yeah, yeah. No, no, well, okay, I think my point was going to be, people who do have property out there bought their property with that in mind. And granted, you know, that's not always a guaranteed lifetime, you know, situation. But sometimes you have to be respectful of people as well as wildlife, too, and just say, you know, let's keep it that way. But the key thing to it also is, if trails are out there and there's public access to some of that land, that makes it good for everybody.
So what I'm hearing is, there's not much development, there's a lot of trees, there's a lot of nature, we want to keep it.
Yeah.
That's the first two comments I've heard. Is that a general agreement?
I would agree. I think it's some really nice, farmland-type, open-space area that should be preserved or, you know, minimized redevelopment of.
Is this, would you guys prefer to see this section of the map empty as-is, or would you like to see something here identifying that we don't want significant development in that portion of town? City, sorry. Minimal?
I like that word. You know, if we were to put things out there, I'd like to see things like parks, you know. One thing that somebody did down the street was put a disc golf course in. You know, if anybody's ever played disc golf, it's like a park. You know, you're out in nature, you're walking, you're hiking, it's really a wonderful sport. That's the sort of stuff I would like to see out there, and trails to get there.
So up here, parks, trails, recreation, minimal development. That's what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
And lots of nods, I'm seeing agreements.
Let me just say, that area of town is, has a golf course.
Okay.
That is where the golf course is, correct. And so there's very large parcels there that are owned and taken up.
Yeah.
And around Willand, excuse me, Lily Pond, you have lots that are there, but there's a lot of wetlands there. So not that that's going to stop us from deeming it whatever it's going to be, that's just something that we need to keep in consideration.
Yep.
And I guess one other thing that I'm thinking about is, when we're putting down these zones, it would be important that we think about where we're going. Where do we want to be in 15 years? Just because we can drop a high-density or a medium-density doesn't make sense with our long-term vision. You know, I always think about, what's, for example, like, we have the dome going in. What's going to happen around the dome? What do we want to happen in that area of Will and Pond Drive? I don't know. I mean, that's something we need to think about, and we should probably factor that into how we do it. Maybe that whole area should be purple. Maybe it should be orange. I really don't know. I look at downtown, you know, what are we going to do with the downtown corridor? I really, I'm not sure. But I know down in my heart that the purple section down Main Street being mixed-use, I think that's true to where we're going. And maybe even, you guys should talk with Rollinsford and find out what they're, what they want to do, because maybe they can pick up where we leave off, or maybe they can meet us in the middle.
I've got to say, I commend you guys for going through the exercise. I've worked with many, or maybe not many, but several towns that, when it gets to the future land use, they're like, nope, we don't want to be the ones to say, development should go here, or development should go here. But honestly, this is the heart of planning. You know, without having some kind of vision and some kind of an idea, you know, you're missing a big part of what planning is about. So you guys did this very easily. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have Lisa and Mike's email address on the back of one of those forms. We forgot to put mine on there. It's J R A N D at Strafford. But if you have any questions about this map, you can email me, you can email Lisa, you can email Mike. Or if you can't find my email somewhere, I'm sure Michelle would forward an email to me if you have any comments. So feel free to reach out. We will update these maps and provide an updated version to you guys.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Mayor, anything to add before we move on to the next item?
Nothing, just thanks to the regional planning folks, Lisa and Jackson. I'm excited to get the final report. We have had 160 people take the Natural Reeses and Land Use survey, so those of you that are listening that haven't taken it, please do. We're hoping to get over 300. That's how many we got for the housing survey.
Next, item D, any new business that may come before the board? Director Mayor?
None this evening.
Workshop business?
Yes, thank you. I did include some information regarding the proposed edits by the Mayor's Housing Task Force for accessory dwelling units. This would be to allow for detached accessory dwelling units. The mayor and the Housing Task Force asked for a few comments, so I provided some comments for you guys. The key changes are they're going to, they're proposing to allow for detached. And the other key change that the Mayor's Housing Task Force is proposing is to delete the architectural standards. And I think that's about it. So I had some comments. The first would be, in the definitions section, we'd need to update the definition of dwelling unit to include detached in that, Section 25 for definitions, dwelling unit accessory. The other comment I had for the planning board to try and get some feedback on is regarding exterior alterations, the changes to the architecture. I think that is something that the planning board might have comments on. As a staff person, I definitely have comments on. I think there should be some kind of architectural regulations for detached accessory dwelling units. New market, I did provide new markets as an example. It's a little bit longer. They have two different sections for, one for attached and one for detached. Recommendation could be to leave what we have in there. I did include some information regarding dimensional standards. And living area shall not exceed 800 square feet. And then I included some information regarding setbacks, just making sure that the detached dwelling unit meets current setbacks for the zone. And then another addition was, in absence of an existing state-approved septic plan on file with the city, they would have to provide some information that the septic system that they have can meet the increased load for the accessory dwelling unit. And then not to allow manufactured housing, or accessory dwelling units on manufactured housing or townhomes. I don't think I included that in there, but I think that should be also spelled out. So if the planning board wants to provide some comments to give back to the Housing Task Force, that would be much appreciated. This is kind of a low-hanging fruit that came out of the regulatory audit from Strafford Regional Planning Commission, so this is the first task that they've been working on. So I don't know if planning board members have any feedback regarding it.
I have a question. What are they talking about, a detached unit?
So a detached unit could be an accessory dwelling unit in a garage or above a garage. Currently, we do not allow that in our regulations.
It's not just building a second house on the lot?
You could build an 800-square-foot house as well.
Separate from the, okay. I guess I might have, I don't know if I'm comfortable with that. I worked in Durham a long time, and of course, I'm kind of experts at that because there's so many college students. And you couldn't tell in these single-family residences that they had apartments, but they were able to put them in the basement or over a garage. And I'm all with having to detach garage with an apartment above it. I don't know if just being able to build a second house, basically, on the property, I don't know if that would do something with the surrounding property values. Like I said, they seem to have it down pat to make a single-family zoned area look single-family, but almost every other house had a student apartment in it. So I don't know if we can do it that way, where, this way protects the single-family owners that don't want to do ADUs and protects their housing values. That's just my one person's comment.
Yeah, I would question the removal of the architectural standard in there. Under a strict interpretation of this, you could basically drop anything onto a lot and have it be completely legal, as long as you can hook it up to utilities and have it pass building code. That really worries me, because if we want to have a community that looks like a community when we grow up, we need to enforce some degree of appearance standard. Otherwise, as long as it's under 800 square feet, drop a trailer in your backyard and it's legal.
Yeah, my big question, and I'll try to address it a little bit, but my big question as I was reading through this is, when does a single-family home transition to a duplex based on appearance, outside appearance? I mean, we're talking about allowing stairways, not on front, but outside. I think we see a lot of, not a lot, but some units here in Somersworth where someone's pushed through to the attic and put in a bedroom or an office space or whatever, but they have to have a fire regress, and they put out a little balcony, which I've never understood that, because I think that's a trap, but anyway. But I don't agree with a set of stairs going up, because that makes it look like a duplex. It makes it look like there's an apartment on the second floor. And I'm not sure, and at least in my mind, if adding a second satellite dish, does that make it look like a duplex? Maybe it does to some people. If you can put in a separate tiny house and not have something over a garage, that makes no sense to me at all. So I'd rather see something over the garage than a separate tiny house-type thing, because at least that over the garage blends in with the current environment that's there. So that's a big question to me, is when does a single-family begin to start? And another one was, you know, you can't have a separate entrance on the front. Well, if you just build out a vestibule and still keep your setbacks and put in two doors and essentially divide it, is that, you're only seeing one door, but is that a duplex? I don't know. And so there's a lot of things I question about it.
Mr. Vincent, Mr. Barry afterwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, yeah, these are some of the challenges that come about for making more housing, to making, like I said, more housing. So these are some of the challenges that we're being challenged with. And I think that slowing the train down, so to speak, and making the right decisions will be the right way to go, because it'll be a less impact on the road without big mistakes.
Mr. Barry.
Couldn't agree with that more. Right on, Counselor. Yeah, I'm also really opposed to the tiny house idea. You know, when you build a house, you have to follow rules, right? You have setbacks, you have all the spacing and whatnot. You know, do these secondary houses have to follow those rules? I would expect they better. And if we were to enforce rules, how many parcels are actually capable of being able to receive something of that nature? Probably not that many, but I still wouldn't like to see two houses on the same parcel. I mean, we have, why are we here? We do subdivisions all the time. I mean, that's literally what you're doing. So why? What's the point?
Mr. Horton?
I'll just add that, I mean, I would agree with a lot of the conversation, that I would be in favor of, like, over-the-garage-type ADU, but not a standalone, separate residence, so.
So, Abin, you have anything?
Yeah, I agree with a lot of it, but the other thing is following the codes, especially the fire safety codes, and the spacing within that dwelling for a fire person to go in there to save somebody. And/or if somebody's hurt or disabled, you know, how are they going to get around? But the unit would have to be big enough or small enough, big enough for them to move around.
Yeah, I got one question for Director Mayor. I don't know if we've covered this in all the housing possibilities. Tiny houses? The best way to utilize those, if we ever were to, do you utilize those as, like, would mobile home parks have an area zoned to build just tiny houses, like a community? Or do you build tiny houses infill? Or do you build tiny houses, infill? Maybe we can workshop or the housing committee?
Yeah, one of the recommendations that came out of the regulatory audit was to allow for cottage courts, which they do in Dover, is it's smaller houses closer together.
Courts are like a zone just, okay, so.
Yeah, in certain zones. I don't, I've yet to see how they work once they're built, and if there's code enforcement issues.
Yeah, I don't want to get away from what we're discussing tonight.
Yeah.
Kind of came up with the ADU discussion. Any other discussion?
I would be happy to rework this and maybe make a recommendation for some architectural standards, and then bring it back to the board.
Sounds good. Any other workshop business?
None this evening.
Communications and miscellaneous, I have one, I attended a council meeting last week, and the city council seems to want to have more communications as far as letting the public know of positions on city boards. So, just in the spirit of that, I want to announce that we, according to the notice downstairs, there are one permanent position on the planning board, a regular position, and three alternate positions currently advertised. So, anybody that is interested would contact, would it be the mayor or the city clerk?
The city clerk, and you fill out a statement of interest, it's called.
Okay, so, trying to get that information out as much as possible. Any other communications and miscellaneous?
I have one thing, Mr. Chairman.
Director Mayor?
So, as some of you may know, Paul Robides will be done at the end of September. He's been great to work with, and he currently serves on the Site Review Technical Committee group. So, we are going to need a new member to come to the group in October. And we meet on the first and third Wednesday of the month at 10 o'clock in the morning, so that first and second Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. So, I know that might be challenging for some members, but if anybody's interested, let me know.
Is there a drop-dead date for that or?
If we could, yeah, if we could have somebody identified by the next meeting, that would be good.
Any other comments? Mr. Barry?
Yeah, a couple of quick comments. First off, I want to thank Mr. Robides for all his time that he's done on this board. I've learned a lot from him in the time that I've been on this board. It's going to be, that's a big pair of shoes to fill, so thank you, Paul. Also, just to speak to Don't Trash Somersworth, we had our session here last weekend formed up at the St. Martin's Church. We collected 10 bags and had seven attendees. We look forward to doing another session down in the High Street corridor, down towards the Lions Club, but another 10 bags. Also, for those of you who aren't aware, the dome has gone up, right? So, if you guys haven't been down on Will and Pond, it is fantastic. Go check it out. So, I think we're finally hitting a major hinge, a turning point for the city, and that's the first big statement. So, I look forward to checking out when it's done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Mr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Barry. Votes and favors, right hand. Close. Thank you very much.